County Commissioner for Tuesday, September 14th. It is 9:01. I would ask that the invocation be led by Pastor Aaron Long with the Village Church, if you'll come up, and the Pledge of Allegiance from Commissioner Bill Pickens. All rise if you're able to do so.
Father of all creation, thank you, Lord. Thank you for your creation. Thank you for our freedom in you. And thank you for the freedoms that we exercise in this country to worship you fully and freely. Thank you for our initial calling as human beings, as being caretakers, caretakers of your creation, caretakers of our nation, of our state, and our beautiful county. Thank you for these men and women who have been called to be caretakers of Putnam County. And thank you for the leaders who represent the people of Putnam. Strengthen them to do your work. Provide them with wisdom that only comes from you. And let us hear your whisper, Lord, loud and clear. Guide the discussions today, Lord. Descend your spirit to unite us in one spirit of love. And forgive us for when we lose sight of our call. Forgive us when we choose not to hear the cry of the needy and not hearing those who lack a voice. And for all those in attendance, either in person or online, let us be reminded that we are urged first and foremost to pray for all those in authority, to petition, to intercede, and to give thanks for all people. We pray that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. We pray for all first responders, essential workers, and those who are called to care for the ill. We pray for all those infected with the COVID virus. And finally, Lord, we pray to be good stewards of your creation, always and everywhere, yielding to your word as a source of guidance. We ask this in Jesus's name and with the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Long, and thank you Commissioner Pickens. Gentlemen, the first item on our minutes are the approval of the minutes stated in your agenda.
Move approval.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner?
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Number three, presentations, clerk of the court, the Honorable Matt Reynolds.
Good morning Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to do this this morning. If I've got any staff from the recording department. Dale couldn't come this morning for hers either. Okay, that's fine. Several weeks ago, I was presented with these recognitions for excellence for best practices acceptance in the clerk's office. The Florida Court Clerks and Comptrollers Association, it's kind of like the Florida Association of Counties for the county, they have implemented a new recognition program for those clerks that undertake implementation of the best practices. They have a multitude of different best practices that they weigh in on. I was just recently appointed to the best practice committee, so I'll get to work on those over the coming years. But they presented me at our summer conference with these nice recognition of excellence for completing our best practices for both marriage licenses and recording fundamentals. So what I'll do is I'll ask the staff that I do have present to come up, and I'd like to present these to the staff of the clerk's office. Even though I was presented with these awards, this was something that staff had already implemented and something that I had basically inherited from Clerk Smith. So I wanted to be sure to recognize the staff because I didn't feel right accepting these awards for myself. So I wanted to be sure to give these out to different staff. And the clerk's office is going to be working on implementing a whole lot more best practices. So expect us to see hopefully more of these coming in the future as we move along. So.
Congratulations.
I also have the next thing, so let me get.
You want to get a picture with them, Matt?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. We'll stand up here and y'all come up here. Y'all come up here.
Here we go.
Are you the official picture taker today?
I am today, sir.
We're going to put Matt at the end because he's taller than me.
That's right. Almost no Disney. He's taller than me.
Mr. Suggs, you all want to join?
Sure.
Okay. Hang on, Mr. Suggs. Julianne, you want to be in it?
I can't, Julianne. I can't run up in there.
Camera keeps getting passed now.
Well, I'm not on that side. I'll be over here.
You can actually put somebody up on Matt's shoulders. Oh, great guys. Everybody say cheese.
Cheese.
All right, I took about 50 pictures, so we'll get them to you.
Good. Congratulations.
Next up, I'm going to be calling pretty much everybody back up here that is here. So I'll do this one by one. And something that I don't believe the clerk's office has done in a while is recognition of completion of various milestones for years of service. And so this is something that I've been wanting to do because we had several employees recently that hit some pretty big milestones. So I wanted to bring all of the employees down to present them with this. The first person I have, and it may be out of order based on the agenda, but we'll start with Dale. She could not be here this morning, but Dale Figaroa. This certificate of appreciation is for five years of service presented to Dale for her dedicated service to the Putnam County Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller. And I'll make sure she gets that. The next one we have, and I don't think, I didn't see Danielle here this morning. She couldn't make it either. Okay. We have another certificate of appreciation for five years of service presented to Danielle Wilkins for her dedicated service to the Putnam County Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller 's Office. Do that one last. We don't have many people here. Mindy could not be here either, and I don't see Tammy. Tammy couldn't make it either. So Mindy Gruder, we have a nice plaque for her as well, presented to Mindy Gruder for her dedicated service to the clerk's office for 10 years. She started in August of 2011. So I appreciate her dedication and years of service. Tammy Thomas just reached 25 years of service, which is a pretty big milestone. She started in March of 1996, so it's been a while. It's been several months since her 25th anniversary, but she has been very loyal and dedicated to the clerk's office, so I appreciate her very much as well. And then somebody that we do have here, which has quite a milestone, I'll ask Ms. Gail Willis to come up. She is celebrating her 50th year with the Putnam County Clerk's Office. She started with the clerk's office in April of 1971. So I would like to present her her plaque for 50 years of service.
Thank you so much. No, let's go have a picture with it.
There must not have been child labor laws.
Yeah, right. That was when you were 10 years old. That's personally, I know that was when you were 10 years old.
Well, wait a minute, Matt, you're warping me down.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm blocking.
50 years.
50 years.
How did you do that? You got to explain. You got to speak to us.
Oh, please.
No, don't want to?
I can't believe that. I can't imagine any other place I'd ever be for 50 years.
So Ms. Gail is quite amazing. As you may or not, may not be aware, her son Joel actually works in county IT as well. He previously worked for the Putnam County Clerk's Office. I understand your mother also worked for the Putnam County Clerk's Office, and Joel's son Shane Willis also currently works for the clerk's office. So I think I heard you say one time, when you put together all of the years that your family has dedicated to the clerk's office, it was over 100 years. It was 120, 110 years of service to the clerk's office. So it's quite a, it is quite an accomplishment, and I am deeply appreciative of your service, Ms. Gail.
Thank you.
And. One last thing that I'll say is surprisingly, Ms. Gail is not our only employee that has 50 years with the clerk's office. Hopefully, we'll get to recognize Ms. Rayelle Christensen when her anniversary comes up. But she also has 50-plus years of service with the clerk's office, and she is the one that does a significant amount of work on the AS400 for us. So hopefully, we'll get to see her sometime in the future.
Is that when that started, in 50 years ago? Just asking.
Yeah, well, I don't think the AS400 was around 50 years ago. But she sure knows how to work it, and I'm very appreciative for them. So thank you all for allowing me to do this this morning. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. It's the best part of our job right here is recognition. And thank you for your comment that it was, can't imagine where you'd be without, Putnam County, we can't imagine where we'd be without you. So thank you so much. All right. Next on our agenda is Commissioner Pickens is going to read the proclamation for the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Have him come up front.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you Chairman Harvey. Declaring September 17th, 23rd, 2021 as Constitutional Week in Putnam County, Florida. Whereas September 17th, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas the Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now for there it be proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners that the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2021, is hereby declared Constitution Week in Putnam County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners urges all citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Duly proclaim this 14th day of September, 2021. Mr. Chairman, I move we accept this proclamation.
Proper motion by Commissioner Pickens?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
We want to thank the Commissioners for this and recognition of the Constitution. As members of the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Constitution is something that's very important to us. In fact, in 1955, I was born, they petitioned the Congress to recognize the Constitution officially. And then in 1956, President Eisenhower recognized it and created Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd. So every year since, it has been recognized as such. Locally here in Putnam County, we're kind of slow start sometimes, our chapter, but we have had several programs regarding that. Mr. Sharp came and spoke with our chapter about the Constitution. We have a bell ringing ceremony, which is this Friday on the steps of the First Presbyterian Church down by the river. Everyone's invited to come. There's a short program at 3:30, and then at 4 o'clock, bells everywhere at 4 o'clock will ring, celebrating the signing of the Constitution. It's 234 years since that was signed. It's the shortest and longest government constitution still in existence. So we really do have something to be proud of.
Thank you.
We have a sign we'd like to present to you all to post out front in honor of Constitution Week.
Good, thank you.
Hey Larry, I'm waiting.
I'm here.
Yeah, she's a DNR.
You want to come in, Nicole?
Come in. There's two Nikoles today.
There's Molly.
Molly Nicole. Sheriff, I love that camera you have. I didn't know you liked bling as much.
Well, that is neat.
Did you see something you shouldn't have?
Took a picture of herself. Thank you, thank you ladies.
Thank you all very much.
What do you want the sign?
Well, we'll take it. I'll put it back here. All right. Next thing on our agenda is the next proclamation, proclamation declaring September National Recovery Month. Commissioner Adams, Zach, you have that proclamation.
This Putnam County proclamation is declaring September National Recovery Month. Whereas mental health and substance use disorders affect all communities nationwide. With commitment and support, those impacted can embark on a journey of improved health and overall wellness. And whereas the focus of the National Recovery Month this September is to celebrate all people that make the journey of recovery possible by embracing the 2021 theme, recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community. And whereas Recovery Month spreads the message that people can and do recover every day. And whereas the impact of mental health and substance use disorders is apparent in our local community, through Recovery Month, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health and substance use disorders. And whereas Recovery Month encourages people in need of recovery services to seek help in managing the effects of mental health and substance use disorders to achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas Recovery Month observance works to improve the lives of those affected by mental health and substance use disorders by raising awareness and educating our community about the effective services that are available. Now therefore, the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims month of September, 2021, as National Recovery Month and call upon our community to observe the month with compelling programs and events that support this year's observance. The 32nd anniversary of Recovery Month. I move that we accept this proclamation.
Proper motion by Commissioner Adams, that proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. I'm going to pass the gavel to our vice chair, Mr. Bill Pickens. And I'm going to read the next proclamation, since I think it's fitting that I serve as that role for the Florida Association of Counties. Resolution number 2167, Mr. Chairman, supporting affordable and reliable high-speed internet throughout Florida. Whereas reliable and affordable high-speed internet access is essential for Floridians to be prosperous and meet today's challenge. And whereas the absence of access to reliable and affordable high-speed internet service prevents communities from achieving the high quality of life that is considered a fundamental component for education and economic success. And whereas the absence and/or lack of high-speed internet hinders the ability for all schoolchildren to have access to educational opportunities, hinders access to telemedicine to improve health outcomes for its residents, and to provide access without demanding travel and transportation. It hinders the ability for rapid communication between the public and law enforcement agencies, hinders the ability for communities to maintain and expand business opportunities, stimulate job growth, and hinders the ability to engage in innovative technologies that are required for a vibrant economy. Whereas a Florida legislature recently passed House Bill 969, creating an Office of Broadband within the Department of Economic Opportunity, requiring the creation of a strategic plan that has goals and strategies for increasing the use of broadband internet service in the state. And where it is an imperative that the strategic plan be based on accurate and up-to-date mapping and internet access needs of the public and private sector. And whereas the National Association of Counties has developed, tested, and easy-to-use mapping tool that can be used to access availability of internet. And whereas in order to meet the goal of universal access to high-speed internet, it will be necessary to determine what the private providers need to provide affordable and reliable connectivity in sparsely located areas and support necessary to address issues of sparse population and to provide expanded internet services and engage governmental entities at federal, state, and local level in order to be accessible. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners hereby support the state of Florida's Department of Economic Opportunity in the effort to achieve access to reliable and affordable high-speed internet to every household and business throughout the state of Florida. That the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners will assist the state office and broadband by participating as needed in meeting the obligations of House Bill 969, including providing information, assistance in mapping efforts, and supporting other such efforts that will lead to enhance access to affordability, reliable high-speed internet services throughout the state of Florida. Copy of this resolution shall be incorporated into the amendments and official records of Putnam County, done, ordered, and adopted by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners this 14th day, September, 2021. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of this resolution.
I second that.
Okay, we got a proper motion and a proper second. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Okay. Mr. Rawls?
In the support of 969, is there any economic impact at all on the budget, or is this just, we already have everything in place that they need?
We already have everything in place, and there's no hit on the budget unless we decide to go any further in the tools that we are provided to. If we want to do mapping and things like that.
That was where I was going, is if we're going to do mapping, is that going to, is there any, is there any, do we have to dedicate any money to this?
Not for this resolution.
Okay, I just don't want to say blanket, yeah, I approve this, and then, okay.
No, no.
All right, I got a problem.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Resolution passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and I'll pass the gavel back to Commissioner Harvey, Mr. Chairman Harvey.
Close the meeting.
All right. Next item on our agenda is our public comment on agenda items. Again, this portion of our agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring these matters of the consent agenda to the board. There will be a chance at the end of this meeting, if you want to bring any miscellaneous items, there are public comment cards. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, if you can, and we'll take that comment period now. So is there anybody that would like to speak on agenda items? All right. Seeing nobody here to speak on agenda items, we will move, close that portion of our public comment period, go to the consent agenda. I'll start with my far left. Commissioner Rawls, is there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda?
I have none.
Okay. Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Adams, Zach?
I have none today.
I'm sorry?
I have none.
Thank you. Commissioner Turner?
I have none.
And I have none. So the chair will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through M.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk of the Court, Matt Reynolds, you're next.
I have nothing else today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good, thank you. Appointments, I'll start with my far right. Mr. Adams, Zach, do you have any appointments you'd like to make?
I have none today.
Mr. Turner?
I have none, sir.
Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Ms. Mary Ann Braddock to serve on the Better Place Plan Oversight Committee.
Okay.
And she should be filling her application out yesterday or today. And then I hope to have an appointment next meeting for Parks and Rec advisory board. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Rawls?
I have Linda Bazzer for District 2, ZBOA.
Good. All right. And that's duly noted. And I have one for the record that Megan Weaver is removing herself off of the Planning Commission, so I'll find a replacement for her. She has contacted me, and she is having a baby, and she's going to focus in on that right now.
She did trick her at large.
She's my appointment, yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, mine was a district appointment. On your ZBOA district appointment, did somebody resign, or did you?
I just can't find.
No, no, I mean, on the ZBOA.
No, it says I have, we have a resignation.
Was that Joe Theibel?
On the ZBOA, no. I have a vacancy from resignation. But it wasn't Joe Theibel. He wasn't on the ZBOA, I don't think.
I thought he was.
You know who resigned?
You know who resigned?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, good.
It was, I can't think of her name, but it was, it wasn't Joe Theibel. Not for District 2, at least.
Okay, are those district-specific, I guess, on the, all of them on the ZBOA, or there are some at large?
There's so many vacancies. We have our District 2 and District 4, and we just apply to District 2.
Okay, they're district-specific, though?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. County Administrator, Mr. Terry Suggs.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, good morning Commissioners. Just one quick announcement. Last week, and I believe, sir, I believe this might have been in the Palaca Daily News as well, the Fair Toss Steel, one of our large stakeholders out of the Bargeport, interesting article where they just completed a new bridge in our nation's capital in DC. And in the article, they mentioned both the Wisconsin plant as well as the Palaca plant as part of that project. And. And so, you know, those are great things that are coming right out of, right out of Putnam County, right here at our Bargeport, so I thought that was a great article. Took the opportunity to send that article to the Army Corps of Engineers with, you know, for the project that we're pushing through right now. And I received a notification yesterday that our fact sheet that we've been waiting on has been pushed through headquarters and is sitting on the Colonel's desk, waiting for signature for approval. According to our project manager, they think that that approval may come as early as this week. So I'll keep the Commissioners abreast of that, updated on that. So another hurdle, hopefully cleared here at the Bargeport. So things are moving forward, and I can't thank the Commissioners enough for your support, for staff, for Deputy County Administrator, Ms. Young, as well as our Legislative Affairs Coordinator, Mr. Sullivan, who's done yeoman's work on this project. So it's a great team effort, but one that wouldn't be supportive without you folks. And so thank you so much for that, and I'll keep you abreast as the news comes down from the Army Corps.
Yeah, Mr. Suggs, that's been, I think, since you've been here, we had, we've been working on that, and prior to that, we've been working on that.
The Bargeport project started a couple of years ago, and I got to give kudos to Josh Gabitton, who is our federal lobbyist, who set that in motion when he held a stakeholders' meeting here with all the folks, not only out of Tallahassee, with the EO, USDA, and those folks, but in EDA at the time, but also DOT and National DOT, US DOT as well. And if you remember, we took a tour out there that day. And so I called him yesterday to tell him as well that the project that he helped us get kicked off about two years ago has really been doing well, and how thankful we are for his support as well.
Well, thank you for all your effort on that. Mr. Attorney, Rich Kamanda?
Nothing today, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Starting to my left, Commissioner Comments, Commissioner Rawls.
I wasn't able to be here last week due to an illness, but I was able to watch this meeting. I really think we should consider having our meetings accessible to the public via, I don't know if YouTube has a channel that can be opened up where they can communicate, or through Facebook, or whatever we can do. I know the city of Placa is able to do that, but y'all couldn't hear me vote. I was voting right there with you. But it is, it is, it just seems like in, you know, the proclamation that we just passed regarding access to internet and the reasons why it's so important, that exemplifies one of the directions we're heading. I think that we should be able to have meetings where if one of the Commissioners is not able to attend in person, they can attend virtually, or if a citizen's not able to attend in person, they can attend virtually. I don't know why we wouldn't consider doing that. So that would be a request from me that we have that conversation at some point in the near future.
Thank you. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, Chairman Harvey, first, I'd like to discuss a topic that we've actually voted on and took action, but I believe there's an avenue to be able to help our employees out. A few weeks ago, we voted to move forward, and I voted for it, to move forward to fund the insurance fully for this past year. But the next year is to fund it with 20% to be paid by, I believe, the employees. And then there was a sliding scale of how that was going to be distributed. Even though I think that was, is the best business decision for the county, I don't know if it was the best, this is just my opinion, if it was the best for our employees. This is my fifth year as a Commissioner, and when I arrived here, we had budget issues. We had a lot of issues. And by all means, when I discuss the situation when I got here, I'm not pointing a finger into Commissioner that came before me. I'm not, because people will criticize me when I'm gone. It's just the way the economy was. And I think we made great strides with staff, bringing in a county administrator and his Probably none of the department heads that are in place today were in place when I started five years ago. So some changes have been made, and I think positive things have come out of that. We've also been able to give raises to employees, small raises over the last three years, which hadn't been able to be done. So even though I believe that what we moved forward was the right business approach, I think it maybe took a back step for our employees. We will continue, and are now, and will continue to have challenges to hire new employees, retain employees, because of the growth and the success of counties surrounding us. And we're not the only department. All the Constitutional, especially the Sheriff's Department, has that issue, too. I believe there's an avenue to help this situation. When we decided to do that, and then we decided to distribute the rest of the monies to the Constitutional officers and retain, I believe, 30% of that particular, Julian, I believe it was $400 and something thousand, to retain that for the Board of County Commissions to be used at however we decide, or staff decides. There's enough money in there to fund the shortfall of the insurance and still leave a little bit of money. So I'd like to put that out for discussion, that that's a possibility that we'd be able to fund it, again, for the coming year, and with a new HR person in position, and hopefully working with the insurance committees. Clay Davis has done a great job, but some of the things that HR may be able to implement, wellness programs and things like that, that maybe we can, and hopefully our claims will change, is that we could support this one more year and hopefully be able to come to this point next year, hopefully with reduced rates and a better plan to move forward. So I just wanted to bring that forward to the board. I believe it would be $109,000 to fund it, and there's a little over $150,000.
Is that a motion you'd like to make?
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second.
That we would allow staff, if, and if the Commissioners agree, that if that money is better served to go ahead and fund our insurance for our employees for the upcoming year. So that would be my motion.
We have proper motion on the floor by Commissioner Pickens, proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Questions from Mr. Turner?
I guess my first question would be, if you all bear with me a second, when we came up with this plan, we came up with a plan to try to find the most equitable way to fund a piece of it from the county. When we talked to all the Constitutional, they unequivocally, unequivocally said that they're going to cover it on their own, one way or the other. That makes it unfair. We tried to do this from a fairness standpoint, all the way through. The whole program was supposed to be fair, that everybody paid 1.2% across the board, all employees at the county. If that had remained the plan, then it would be fair. But making the, making a paramedic pay 1.2%, when a member of the clerk, or the sheriff's office, or the supervisor's office, or whoever that have stated they're going to cover it on their own, that makes it unfair again. It makes it unfair to the employees of Putnam County on the board side. My question would be, with that being said, are we talking about that we're going to cover the $108,000 on the board side and let the Constitutional's cover theirs, just like we've said all, they said they would already out of their budget? Or are we talking about spending and covering everybody's everywhere? Because I'll support it if we're going to cover the BOCC side, because it's unfair to make our employees pay when the other Constitutional officers are not going to, are going to absorb it in their budget. So if we're going to absorb that to put us on the same scale as them absorbing theirs, I'm for it. If we're going to cover everybody's, then I'm not for it. So I need, I guess, my question would be, what is the motion exactly? Are we covering everybody's? Are we covering BOCC side of it, because the Constitutional's have already stated they're going to cover theirs? So to make it fair, we cover ours, and then everybody's gets covered by the offices? That's my question. Does the motion for Mr. Pickens, does this motion cover us covering ours, or us covering everybody's? Because it's not 109.
No, it's us covering the BOCC side.
Okay, then I'll support that motion along with it.
Unless I'm, unless I'm wrong, and I know they probably still won't agree, that we did not fund fully the Constitutional's, but we did fund some extra money, didn't we?
We did.
Out of that $400 and something thousand, which can help go to that.
Okay.
And that's how you understood it, too, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'll.
Did you second it?
Yeah, I'll take it either way, but if I can have the floor?
You have the floor, sir.
I, we shorted the Constitutional's. I think we should, I think we should bear responsibility, the Commission as a whole, for what I would consider our failure over the past couple of years of not monitoring and running this insurance plan the way we should have. I don't think we should put this on the backs of the employees. We weren't doing our due diligence. We weren't getting the numbers. We weren't having meetings. We weren't demanding the data, and when we did, we weren't getting it. So I think we should bear the brunt of this, all of it, not the employees at all. I think it puts the Constitutional's in a tough position. The Clerk of Courts indicated that this would chew into the, his ability to build give pay raises. And then this morning, I stayed late watching the news, wanting to see what the CPI was. You know, our core CPI is at 4% year-over-year. That's a 4% inflation, does not include groceries, when we all know that groceries cost a lot more money, doesn't include fuel, which goes up and down. But what we're offering, at a bare minimum, if we can't give our employees at least enough of a pay raise to get them to the 4%, they're going to be suffering over the next year, having to spend more money to provide themselves with the same level of whatever lifestyle they had before, or less. And then to put another burden on top of that with this insurance, and a lot of this was foreseeable. We could have stopped the ball in motion. We could have called meetings over the past couple of years, and I requested it, that we sit down with staff and have a conversation with them as stakeholders, and let them know that they have a dog in this fight, and we didn't do that. I think that we should pay for this ourselves right now and allow the employees not to take this double whammy.
Mr. Adams, that, you have the floor?
I believe the Clerk of Courts has his hand up as well, so I'll defer to him if you'd like. He's leaving.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a quick comment, you know, with this discussion. I wasn't going to, you know, bring it up again. I kind of debated whether I should bring it up any further to the, to the board or not, but since we're, since we're discussing this, and since, you know, Commissioner Turner is speaking of fairness. So the way I'm viewing it from my, my point of view is, the board has not allocated enough funding to the clerk's office to be able to give raises. The board is giving their employees raises. So that is why I was going to try to absorb the cost to not pass on any health insurance increases to my employees. And the way I was going to do that is, my share, or the clerk's office share of the insurance increase was a little over $20,000. When you guys voted the other day to split the 400, that excess 20%, the clerk's office share was about $16,000, so I only needed to find about $5,000. But now, if the board is talking about further diluting what I am going to get in the guise of, quote, fairness, I don't consider that very fair whatsoever, because first of all, I don't have the money to even give my employees raises. And then, second of all, it's just more, it's not fair to me, to the clerk's office employees. And so I just felt that I really needed to make that statement. But it is the decision of the board, and whatever you guys choose to do, we will honor. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, I appreciate that. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Turner?
Okay. Number one, the clerk's budget included a 10% raise for health insurance in his budget. Number two, the clerk decided to fund a whole new department, the IG department, and support staff for it. If he decides to fund the department instead of, instead of giving his employee raises, that's fine. That's his, completely his deal. But then he comes up here, we didn't dilute any money that went to the clerk's office the other day, not a penny. You got your same percentage that you got first time around, the second time around. So no money was diluted from, from the clerk's office or any other Constitutional. Additional monies were given on top of the previous monies. So all the Constitutional's made the comment, straight up, that if, that if we were going to pass any on at all, they were going to absorb it. That made it unfair on the BOCC side. Us covering ours shouldn't impact any of the other Constitutional's any more than they were impacted before this motion was made. So, you know, I just, I have to bring that up, too, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have another couple of comments, if that's all right.
Mr. Reynolds, let me go back to Mr. Pickens, because I read the same thing in your, in your initial budget that you submitted, with the 10% insurance and the 3% raise. Mr. Pickens?
From what I understand, the motion I'm making is, and I hope y'all get this fixed, because I don't like this one.
No, I'm sorry.
But anyway, is that, that's the money that we're getting on the BOCC side from the money that was left over. That's where this money's coming from. It's not going to further dilute any of y'all's budget at all. Correct? This is from the 150 that we got out of the 469. So this is BOCC money that we could use to buy JR a fire truck, or we could, we could do this. And I'm just making that suggestion, that it might be best served as our employees to use that money to fund the insurance.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. In regards to what Commissioner Turner was just saying about creating a new department. So let me just back up and explain a little bit more about how I approached the budget process when I came to the board with my budget request this year. So in my budget request this year, I held the line. I started at the same amount of funding as the previous year. And I approached that to do so, so that we try to live within our means. Then I presented the board with the various cost increases, four things, like raises, 10% health insurance, the reallocation through an audit that we had to go through with DFS. And so based upon the money that I have allocated from the board right now, I can only cover the increase from the allocation for DFS. What I did with setting money aside for a new, creating an inspector general or an internal audit shop is, there is a reason that I don't have a chief deputy clerk. I am going without a chief deputy clerk to create that savings to be able to do something that I am constitutionally charged, also charged by Florida statutes, to do. That is, part of my job is to make sure that things are audited. I'm the ex officio auditor of the county. This hasn't been being done in the past, and I feel like it's something that, it's something that I am personally responsible for, and that's why I am making the effort to make savings on my own to be able to implement something that is needed. So I just wanted to bring that to the forefront. I understand that it looks like it's the creation of a new department, but I created savings elsewhere so that I could live within my means and still get things done that I feel like I need to get done.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Adams, that?
So I guess, as far as it goes with the budget, so we decided to do, as a commission, three to two vote, we decided to go with balancing it out with the percentages to everyone based on whatever the criteria was, based on last year, I think it was, right? I don't believe in that process, but I was on the losing side of that vote, and I accept that. I think with that, when we did, decided to go that process, we had meetings set up for budgetary things, and we were having really good discussions, and that all kind of closed. And then, so we basically gave staff a lot of autonomy as far as the decision-making for how our whole budget's going to look from the BOCC side. And the Constitutional's still chose to provide us information and didn't take advantage of the autonomy that they could have had, because they just had a percentage and they could just spend it as they liked. So I appreciate that you guys were forthright and gave us information on your budgets, and I don't think we should be using that against you. So I think that's what we're saying here, is, oh, by having an IG, you made bad decisions or not decisions that, you know, to use the money for alternative purposes. It's up to you to decide what you do with your money, and especially if we're going to go with this percentage basis, which I'll never vote yes for that, but that maybe, we may vote yes for it again next year. I'm all for the IG. I can't vote for the motion as it stands because it doesn't go across. I can't vote for the motion as it stands, because it doesn't go across all the Constitutional. I have been thinking about this a lot. And and part of when we spoke about this, the the first time that Commissioner Turner had brought it up, you know, part of my argument was is we should be using that savings to fund raises, more raises, for the lower paid employees in the county. And if we're not doing that, that kind of gets me a little bit off of the idea of moving it forward the way it stood before. Understand, we already had voted that forward. But since it's back up in front of us, I I can't support this only because it doesn't include the Constitutional. And I guess I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
I think we're at a juncture, we have an opportunity to make something right that that's broken. I think in in retrospect, what we should have done was made the insurance fund whole first, before we started allocating anybody to anybody. At the end of the day, the B O C C and the B O C C only makes the final determination on what happens with this insurance policy, this insurance plan. I think we really missed an opportunity by not addressing that before we started making allocations for the budget. And I agree with Commissioner Adams, Zach, and I've said it before. I think just taking a percentage and throwing it willing Elliot at an apartment, saying, here, this is all you get. They came to us and they said, this is what we need. We never addressed the needs. We just said, this is all you're going to get. You know, I I I don't like the way we do our budget. You know, there's a lot of things that that I don't care for. But I I think the budget is one thing that really sticks in my craw the most, because we're not taking a look at it from a real, true fiscal responsible position. We're just throwing something at the wall, come up with a hundred ninety-eight million. I today have never gotten an answer to the question I asked. Where is the two two hundred and two million dollars being spent? Where is it coming from? But, you know, I I I'm bare minimum, I'm in favor of this motion, because if nothing else, it'll it'll help support our employees. But I would like it to go across the board to all county, including Constitutional.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Okay, so the motion as it stands and seconded is that we're going to cover the B O C C side of this to make it fair with the Constitutional covering theirs. Is that correct?
Correct.
Out of the money that was just
Yes, sir, I understand.
The last money that was distributed, which would we could use it for anything we wanted to.
Right, that's correct. I understand that. Thank you. Call for question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Starting to my far right, Mr. Adams, Zach, you have the floor. Whoops, I'm sorry, Mr. Pickens still has the floor. I apologize for that.
Oh, no worries.
On a lighter note, I I just want to thank Chairman Harvey for all the things that he does for Putnam County. And some of the small things that actually end up meaning a lot, kind of unnoticed. But he reached out to me last week and and asked if I would be interested in coming to the Interlochen Crescent City game, it's held in Interlochen, and walk out, representative of me graduating from Crescent City High School and then Larry from Interlochen High School, to walk out and and join in the coin toss at the beginning of the game. And I asked him if we were going to have to square off. And and he said no. He said no. But I was extremely honored to do that. The referees that were there and and did the coin toss and walked out with the players wanted to make sure, they kept talking to me the whole time. He said, don't, don't, don't take him out. Don't take him out. So anyway, but I was honored to walk out with the quarterback, Nakeem Scott, who I believe scored the the winning touchdown. And the winnings touchdown for Crescent City. Yeah, that's the start of the little rub. And also Luke Schulinkamp, and I believe I pronounced that correctly. Luke goes to South Putnam Church where I attend, and just a fine young man. So I was able to walk out and participate in the coin toss. I actually left after the first quarter, right when Crescent City scored. And I felt that J R Grimes and and the other fans that were there had everything taken care of with the team. And Crescent City led the whole game, but had to come back from behind at a minute and thirteen seconds to win. But Crescent City won twenty-seven to twenty-one. And Larry, I challenge you to come down to Crescent City next year, and and we'll do the same thing. But I wanted to thank you for that, and I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Yeah, I thought I was going to have to wear a jersey today. I just I didn't know if I would or not.
Crescent City jersey, correct.
Correct. Okay, Mr. Adams, Zach, you have the floor, sir?
Yeah, so I just wanted to make note of the, you know, the fact that we 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 argue about things up here, and we we discuss things, and we do it pretty aggressively. But, you know, there there's a lot of things on our agendas, and we we've talked about this in the past, that, you know, we all agree on. And that that's a good thing as well. We had an agenda today that really had a lot of common sense things on it. I mean, literally A through M, and we all agree to do it under consent. It's not because there wasn't any discussion. It's because there was a lot of good stuff on there. So I just do want to make the public aware that there is a lot of good. When we pull one or two items and we have a a good debate about it, that is for the benefit of the community and staff and everyone watching and listening. I had some more fluffy type stuff, I guess is the way I like to refer to it. But when I listened to the Pastor Long this morning, you know, he kind of said something that struck a chord with me about looking out for those that are in need and those without a voice in our community. And it's it's important, and that, you know, part of my concern is we we have an opportunity to do something about that as a commission. And we don't always get those type opportunities. And it it's rare, and it's because of a disease that we were were given this ARPA money, and in the past, we were given the CARES Act money. These are two unique situations. The CARES is passed and done. So ARPA is our means forward. These are, this is a unique situation where we can fund things that directly impact the citizens and the people in need who need to have their voice heard. And we need we need to really consider that. We've already committed about almost twenty percent of the budget of ARPA to date with our last meeting. You know, I don't want to see it where we get to a hundred percent, and we haven't met any of the needs, whether it's for addiction, education, people that are homebound, people that need food, people with disabilities. There are some opportunities here. We've had several organizations present us opportunities. And I just, I hope and pray that this commission as a whole utilizes some of this over the next two years to help with some of those items. There is infrastructure money. We've heard it from our Congresswoman. We've heard it from our state legislators. That is coming down the pipe that some of these other projects could be utilized for. And just that struck a chord with me, and I switched up what I wanted to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start by saying I agree with you, Commissioner Adams, Zach. I I look forward to a robust discussion on the ARPA funds. I really do. And I do believe that some of that definitely needs a go and that the other types of funding that are coming down the pipe for for different things should be taken into account when we talk about that also. The I have an item to bring before the commission today that probably nobody's even heard of before. I had some members of the community reach out to me, because it's in my district, and ask would we be interested in owning the old East Palaca Community Center. Now, the community center's not there anymore. It burnt down, and they cleaned it up and what have you. So it's basically just a park. The when I was a child, we played baseball there. San Mateo played East Palaca, whatever. So it used to be a baseball field. It's not anymore. So it would mostly be a park. I ran that by the Parks Department. And they said that because there's no other playground in that area that that would be meet a need that they had. Now, we can't build a playground right now, but if we're going to get this property, we're only going to get it right now. The person that reached out to me on this said that there wasn't but one thing we had to do. We had to name the park after Jerry Beedenbaugh. He was very, very involved in that organization over the years. And so if they donated the property to the county, then we'd have to name the park after them. So I would like to have the permission from the camp, from the commission, to reach back out to these citizens that are on that board or whatever and tell them, yes, we would be interested in it, because it would be a park. At this time, the only additional expense that I can see would be we'd have to mow the grass, you know, continue mowing the grass in the area. It's already cleared and and what have you, so it wouldn't be a tremendous thing. If any, if nobody knows where it is, it's basically right across the street from the post office in East Palaca is where it is.
Oh, okay.
Right across, what's the street that goes out to the highway?
McCormick?
McCormick, yes. Right across McCormick from the post office there. There's it used to be the East Palaca Community Center. It was the same thing as the
It's right across from our trail system.
Yeah, I think so. And and so, you know, maybe it could be a piece of a trailhead. It could be a park. As we find time in the future, maybe we could budget some money in one of the future budgets to maybe, excuse me, put in a little playground or something or what have you. So we have nothing like that over there. The San Mateo Center used to also be private. They turned it over to the county back when Charlie Baird was the was the county commissioner. So basically, it's the same thing. It's a a private entity that wishes to turn it over to the county if we want it. I think it would be very good for the county. So, Mr. Chairman, at this time, do you need a motion for me to proceed with this?
I think we can just get consensus, wave and support.
Okay.
I'll agree with you, Kevin.
Yeah, I'll right now, do you support that concept?
Not yet.
Okay. Mr. Adams, Zach, you have the floor?
Do you want a free park?
Not yet.
Mr. Adams, Zach?
So my my concern is, I I feel, and and maybe it's unique to West Putnam, but we're not maintaining the parks that we have that aren't centralized to Palaca. Merrells Youth Sports Association has been losing people like crazy because the fields aren't mowed, and people are leaving our county and going to Keystone and other areas, including myself, because we had no alternative, because the soccer program couldn't exist, because of the fact they couldn't get enough kids, partly because the fields aren't maintained, partly because the cost is much higher there compared to other areas, because basically we're competing with the program in Palaca, because the commission funds part of the ability for the the kids to play. And we're not doing that in other sections of the county. So my only concern with taking on an additional park of any kind is how does that spread out our ability to maintain the parks that we already have? Because we're not doing a good enough job today. So I don't want to take on another thing when we're not funding our park. And I don't think it's a because the Parks Department doesn't want to do the job. It's because we're not funding them enough to get the equipment and the people out to the other areas. We have currently, I mean, we need to build up the Interlochen, West Putnam Youth Association, whatever we call that. They they're not even playing ball, because this, basically, the group defuncted. We need to find ways to help the groups that already exist in conjunction with maybe expanding our park system. But until we can do that, I I just think we need to focus on making what we have today better, and then worry about expanding.
So East Palaca can't have a park, because they're not maintaining the ten they got in Interlochen good enough?
Well, how are they going to? But I'm worried about taking on an unfunded mandate, which is something you talk about a lot from the stias, and the fact that we're going to have a park when we can't currently maintain some of the parks that we have, based on our budget. So that's that's what I'm talking about. Now, if we find a way to do that, I'm all for expanding our parks and having parks in every community in the county. But we need to do a better job with what we have today.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
We're not taking action on acquiring the property today. We'll have a conversation when we get the agreement put in place. But I agree, we're going to have to make sure that it's funded properly for us to be able to afford to maintain it. I think it's a great opportunity. The location's awesome. It's definitely in an area that's slated to be in high demand from a growth perspective. So I think we should take a look at that. There is a, you know, you got the basketball courts right down the street, but there's really not a lot to do in that area if you don't, you know, if if you don't put that in there. And I think that we should be taking a look at opportunities like this for our our future, for our citizens. But like Commissioner Adams said, we Adams, Zach said, we need to make sure that we have the funding to be able to handle it. And right now, we've got bicycle trails and massive gaps in between that we can't even get design work started on, because we're not willing to commit to just putting up the the money to start the the trail maintenance process, not even have to pay for it ourselves, just to be able to say that we'll be responsible for maintaining it and then finding partners to do that. But I I I see it both ways. I think we should take the opportunity. And I look forward to seeing the agreement when it comes in front of us.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens.
Okay, you're just asking for permission to just move forward?
I'd like to just say, yes, we're interested if you want to give it to us.
Yep.
Okay, yes. And but I would, and I know you will, for when you come back with the presentation that we run at by the Parks Advisory Board?
I started there. Well, I started at the Parks.
At Parks. And I'm sure Kevin will update us on our next meeting, first Monday in October.
I don't know there's anything to update you on yet. I basically went to them and said, would y'all have interest? Because if you don't, I don't even want to bring it up. And they said, yes, they did have interest, because there's no playground in the area. There's a basketball court. But other than that, there's no parks anywhere over in that area. So.
Right now, you have four people in consensus, Mr. Adams, Zach?
I'm going to add my consensus based on the idea that would come back to us.
Good deal. Okay. So you have five consensus right now, so we're good. Mr. Turner, you still have the floor?
Yes. I'm glad to see that we have the bio solids on the the agenda for this afternoon. So I had some comments I was going to make on bio solids, but I'll hold them until the workshop this afternoon, when the when it's on the agenda. Also, I want to start, I want to request that waste that a discussion about waste pro be put on the agenda for the workshop this afternoon. I don't know about other commissioners, because I can't talk to them except when I'm in a meeting legally. So and haven't. But, yes, they're frustrated, waste pros frustrated. Everybody's frustrated. They can't do their job. The citizens are aggravated.
Can we do that this afternoon?
Yes, sir. I'll get there. But I'd like that to be placed on the agenda this afternoon, if possible, sir.
We'll make room for it.
I would like that on there, and then we'll talk about it, because it's got something's got to be done. I'm just telling you. So the that's all I had for today. Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you. And I want to give a few things out. Tonight is the first middle school game at the Interlochen Junior and Senior High. It'll be kind of like a freshman team, and they're going to be playing Palaca, I believe. So if you can make your way out there at six o'clock this evening. Rotary is taking over the concession stand. Sorry, had to give a shameless plug for that. But, you know, that that's a good event. And Saturday, the West Putnam Athletic Association is having another game at Interlochen High School. They use the football fields there. Last two weeks ago, they had a jamboree, and it was very well attended. Many teams throughout this region came, and it was a very good, very good meeting, a very good opportunity. Okay, so now it comes the time in our public comment for miscellaneous items. We do ask that if you can, fill out a blue card. If you can't, you can still bring matters to the board's attention. Do not consider that there's going to be debate on items that we not, we don't know anything about. We will ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. And I think Ms. Ashley has a card. Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Mr. Hammond, do you realize that you just heard that this is going to be at two o'clock today?
I heard that, but I I also want to keep my three minutes spoken up.
You may, you may came up, come up, sir, and we got your emails too, to referring to that. I didn't respond to you, because I I did want to let you know that it was going to be at two o'clock. But go right ahead, Mr. Jim Hammond?
If you raise it up.
If you raise it all the way up, you got to speak into it.
A little higher.
It it'll come up. There you.
Got a fishing pole like that?
Yeah.
All right. Number one, my name is Jim Hammond. I'm a resident of Putnam County, landowner of Putnam County, full time. And I would like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. And sorry, you guys didn't get any of this this handout. I've never done this before, and I thought it was just these guys I was speaking to.
It is, sir. It is. That's fine.
The handout that I gave you is, the first page will be a map. This map shows in red writing the proposed dump site for the biohazards waste here that that's been the big commotion for a while. Okay? As you can see from this map, there is a blue line. That blue line is a creek, a stream, a running, free flowing stream that runs into Crescent Lake. Now, all of us, in our years, have seen what water does when it's flowing fast. There's no control in it. So anybody that can say, I'm going to dump a bunch of stuff here, but I'm going to minimize the effort to have it run into the lake. Come on, really. All right? The next page, you will The next page, you will see the stream, and you will see the land that I believe is wetlands that has already been partially destroyed, and I think, my opinion, that the reason that you see all this fill is so the person wanting to dump this stuff can elevate this land higher than the minimal slope to have a site here, but it's still not gonna fix it, we know you can't stop that, all right? This, this lake or this picture here, right down on this end, is highway, old Highway seventeen, right here, and this creek, stream runs into the lake I showed you on the map. The next page will contain from the United States Environmental Protection Agency what can be or will be contained in what this guy is applying to dump here, Class B bio solids, these things contain arsenic, how much of that do we want in our lake? Cadmium, chromium, copper, lead, mercury, nickel, selenium, and zinc, these are all stuff you don't put in our water, you don't, I know y'all wouldn't want it in your water that you're drinking or eating fish from, and this is from the EPA, this is not something I just pulled out of the air, all right? Then the last piece of sheet here was something that I generated with some of the facts and some of the results. This picture here, for those of you that don't have one of these, this is dead fish caused by red tide, algae blooms. When you put poop nutrients in water, you cause algae blooms to take off, these algies are there now, all right, but they're kinda like some bad stuff that might be in us, it's sort of dormant, well, when you start fertilizing it-
That's gonna, go ahead and wrap up.
Okay, when you start fertilizing it, it takes off and grows, and then it depletes the oxygen, and then fish die.
Yes, sir.
This-
Mr. Hammond, we need to wrap up, okay?
Okay, this is one-fifth, one-fifth of the number of signed petitions, one-fifth, there's about four hundred here, so we're talking two thousand plus people that y'all are here to represent, to look out for their good, have said, "We don't want this", and it's not so much they don't want the biohazards, which I'm sure they don't want that either, this is the wrong piece of property, it will run into the lake. You wouldn't want your children swimming in that lake a couple of years after this happened, you wouldn't wanna eat the fish, but worst of all, do you really and truly wanna sit up there and disappoint all of these people that said, "We want y'all to look after our good, here's my vote, look after me"? Now, I would like to ask one more thing before I walk away.
Mr. Hammond, it's time, we gotta wrap up.
Okay, so I'm done?
Yes, sir.
I got some questions.
Thank you. Mr. Pickens, you have a question, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Hammond, we've spoken a couple times on the phone, I believe, about this, and I gave you my opinion on it, and we are gonna discuss it this afternoon, and I'll bring up the concerns that you have. I, I don't feel it's the right property, and never, never really did, told the D E P that a while back, and the video, the email that you sent me with Ariel?
Yes, sir.
You sent that, John, did you get that? Sophie, you got it? Okay, would you thinking there's something maybe going on that shouldn't be happening, so I've sent it to our CO's department, so they'll look into that also, okay?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Rawls, you have the floor, sir?
So, I was just talking with our council, and right now, our hands are a little bit tied, because we're, we're behind the eight ball, this has kinda caught us off guard, it's the first time since I've been a commissioner that we've had this happen, we can't put anything in play right now that would affect this property, I think, one of the things that you and your group needs to do is go petition all the people on the planning board, this is gonna require a special use permit.
Total planning?
Huh?
Don't go to this.
ZBOA?
ZBOA, or Z, okay, ZBOA, go to ZBOA and lobby them, and then what we can do in the future is we can put safeguards in place, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, but you're saying that we can establish in our land use code maximums, or where we'll allow it?
You can add regulations, that's what Commissioner Adams has been talking about as well.
But I mean, would it be in the land use code?
We're gonna discuss this now, this afternoon, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready for a discussion now, I don't mind.
No, we're gonna do it, it's on the agenda, and it wouldn't be fair to the public if we didn't give them that opportunity to hear from us at two o'clock today.
I think, right now, I wouldn't let, let any time pass, before he leaves today, I would get a list of everybody on the ZBOA.
If y'all have been receiving emails from-
We have.
I have.
So has the Z O B A.
Ever gonna come before us, Mr. Hammond, that's what we're trying to tell you, it's never coming to us.
It's not gonna come to us.
It's not coming to the county commission, it's going to the ZBOA.
Y'all still have influence.
It's gonna go, we cannot influence-
We cannot influence a ZBOA.
But, but we did get all the form emails, we did.
You can do, as the Crescent City elected officials did, and put something in writing-
We were going to talk about-
You don't want this.
About that this afternoon.
Mr. Hammond, we're gonna do that at two o'clock today, I promise, okay? Thank you for your time, and we appreciate you coming.
If you get, if you get-
If I could just say one thing before he leaves, Mr. Hammond, it's not coming to us, Commissioner Rawls is exactly correct, your group needs to get hold of ZBOA and start trying to talk to the ZBOA zoning board of adjustment, because they're quasi-judicial, they don't even, we don't, they can't even appeal to us, that's what we've been trying to say all along, it's never gonna come to this board. Now, there's certain things we may or may not could do at some point in the future about certain things, but on this particular one, if I lived next door, I'd be arm-in-arm with you, I'd go be seeing the ZBOA, because I wouldn't want the thing there either because of the stench of it, the, these things smell, so my suggestion to you is exactly what Commissioner Rawls said, go talk to your ZBOA members, make sure and find out when that goes to ZBOA, and that's the room to pack with your, all your people, is that the ZBOA, you could say whatever you want, we can pass anything we say, that we don't think this is a good spot, hell, I'll sign that tomorrow, but it's not gonna do any good it's going to ZBOA.
And the ZBOA has no, or y'all don't at all, your opinions do not influence them whatsoever?
No, we're not allowed to-
I could talk to people, citizen.
No, we're not allowed to go to them and say, "We want you to vote like this or that", that's the-
Am I hearing that if I bring two thousand people to the ZBOA meeting, that will be-
Can influence a ZBOA, yes, sir.
You bet you you can.
They're your fellow citizens.
They're your citizens appointed by us to represent you, yes, sir.
What I've done is I've started at the governor, everything that y'all have gotten from me, or from the group I'm working with, has gone from the governor all the way down to almost the garbage.
Yes, sir, I understand, but you can even call Mr. Joe Biden himself, but I'm telling you, the person, the group that you need to be talking to are the people that are on the ZBOA, you need to find out from Mr. Seoffe's department when that's gonna be on the agenda, and then that's when you need to go and be at that meeting with all your people, and that's what-
And y'all, I got, I got Abby Solz, I got Tabitha Lassiter to give her all the information of all the ZBOA members and their email addresses, so y'all, it's out, that's out there.
We have all that.
Yeah, good.
So as private citizens, not commissioners, step out of the commissioner's shoes into private citizen's shoes, y'all cannot come to this meeting along with me and say, "We don't want this"?
I think it would be improper as a commissioner if I went to the ZBOA and did that, Mr. Hammond, I really do, but I'll state for you on TV right now, I'm not going there, if that helps you, but I don't think it's proper for me to go to the ZBOA and try to extend my influence as being a commissioner on somebody who's an appointed ZBOA member, I don't think that's proper.
The reason being is the appeal process goes to court, okay, so you can see where the rub is at that point, there's an appeal, if somebody appeals at either side, it goes to the circuit court at that point, so just kinda hang in there, but Commissioner, and I'm gonna close down this, this one, Commissioner Rawls said something that kinda struck me when he, when he first said it, and he looked at how much poop can Putnam County handle, remember you said that statement? And if you look out through all of Putnam County and all the platted subdivisions that are out there, and let's just say by a magic wand, that all of them sold and all of them started building, how much poop can Putnam County really handle? So I've contacted some of my friends in the environmental groups that people think I'm opposed to, I'm not, I'm environmentalist, we're just on different sides on some issues, that's all, I think any outdoorsman's a good environmentalist and doesn't want this county to be messed with, and I don't think we can handle much more poop, because we have to build out, one day, Putnam County's gonna build out, and applying bio solids to land might not be a great idea, so thank you for coming, we greatly appreciate it, and is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak at public comment? Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public portion of our meeting, I do wanna give kudos to Mr. Grimes, Mr. Hutchinson, all the people who made Saturday's event for Patriot Day just a remarkable success, it was held out here as usual, and a lot of lucky officials attended, and it was just amazing, yeah, it was amazing that the weather cooperated, it wasn't too hot, and, and I just wanna say, even if it was, it's worth it, but it was a tremendously moving ceremony to me, and Commissioner Rawls, when you were doing, you know, reading the people's names, and then the bells went off from Fire Chief Hutchinson, it just sombering moment, and, and I spoke about the page and the call that's on people's lives, and I will tell you that, you know, you're in that moment that you don't know what you're talking, you don't know what you said, but you know you're saying something meaningful, and then when that page went off at the end, it just moves me, it moves me, and so all of us, if you're watching us on TV, remember every day that these men and women leave their homes and leave their families and drop their fork and their plate off the dinner table to answer the page, because somebody has a need, and somebody's gonna respond, and that person's gonna be trained well enough to help. So all the first responders, Sheriff's Department, police force, you know, fire, rescue, everybody, hats off to you for the work that you did, and for, for those of you who put this together, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned, we'll be meeting again at two o'clock, I'm sorry, we're gonna recess for a 5:05 meeting, we do have a workshop at two, thank you for attending today.